Good morning Birmingham, today is Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. The time is 9:32. I call to order the regular meeting of the Birmingham City Council. This morning we'll have invocation read by Dr. Gregory L. Clark, pastor of the New Hope Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilor Daryl O'Quinn. If you're willing and able, please stand and join us, thank you.
Let us pray. Father, we give thanks for our city and its government. We hold up in prayer before you, men and women, who are in positions of authority. I pray and intercede for our mayor and each councilor, that the Spirit of the Lord rest upon them. I pray that both skillful and godly wisdom will lead them in the pathways of righteousness. Your word declares that the heart of a king rests in your hand. We believe that you purpose that these men and women governing over us do so with integrity and humility, as they shall remain in these positions of authority. Master, we pray today for the peace and prosperity of every district, every community, every neighborhood of Birmingham, Alabama. And may we as citizens, respect our leaders and undergird them daily with our prayers. Lastly, our Father, we thank you for 2023, and another chance to do and be better. In the name of our risen and reigning Lord and Savior Jesus Christ, I pray, amen.
Thank you very much Pastor Clark for that very thoughtful and really wonderful prayer. We appreciate you for starting us off for this year, giving us time to reflect and be thankful, thank you. At this time, councilors, I entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the previous meetings.
Madam President, roll call. Just roll call.
Just a little thing called roll call. Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Counselor Abbott. Counselor Member Clark. Counselor Member Moore. Happy New Year. Counselor Member O'Quinn. Counselor Member Tate. Good morning. Happy New Year. Counselor Member Williams. Counselor Member Woods. President Pro Tem Smithman. Morning, President Alexander.
Good morning, President. At this time, councilors, we'll ask for approval of the minutes from the previous meetings, August 2nd, 2022, and August 9th, 2022.
Uh, I'm looking for approval.
Alright, voting should be open right about now. Counselor Member Moore. Okay, I got you. That vote should be up.
Alright, thank you, those minutes are approved. The minutes are not ready for August 16th, 2022, through December 20th, 2022. At this time, we'll have communications from the mayor, Chief.
Yes ma'am, good morning Madam President, Madam Pro Tem, members of the council, members of the public, Happy New Year to everyone. The mayor is on his way, I do have some brief announcements as he makes his way here. Make-up Day Trash Pickup, I know there have been a lot of questions about this. Since City Hall was closed on yesterday, in observance of the New Year holiday, residents on the Monday Uniform Cart Program will have their trash picked up on tomorrow. That's Wednesday, January the 4th. Again, residents on the Monday Uniform Cart Program will have their trash picked up on tomorrow, Wednesday, January the 4th. Hey, brother mayor. All of the residents with Monday Trash Pickup will have theirs removed on Thursday.
Happy New Year, Madam President. Happy New Year to the council. Thank you Cedric. Chief Sparks. Just picking up where he left off, for the 20,000 households using the new uniform garbage cart. Please remember that garbage must be bagged, as well as placed inside the complimentary 96 gallon cart. If placed on the ground beside the cart or on top of the cart, it will not be picked up again. Everything must be placed inside the cart. We'll continue to share this information. Residents using the new cart should place their carts in front of their home. Any household garbage placed on the ground alleys or on the ground in front will not be picked up as well. You can receive more updates by going to birminghamal.gov/pickup. Again, that's birminghamal.gov/pickup, or by texting BHAMrating to 888-777. A few more notes, free lead paint testing, again, it's about free lead paint testing. On Wednesday, January 4th, tomorrow, the Department of Community Development will conduct a public meeting concerning free lead testing. The meeting will take place from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at the Birmingham Crossplex. And that address is 2340 Crossplex Boulevard. For more information, you can call 866-925-5742. On a good note, Madam President, and council, we look forward to discussing the Choice Neighborhood Grant Application today. And we're very excited about... And we're very excited about item 23 as a relationship street paving. 28, thank you. That concludes the mayor's report, and again, Happy New Year everybody.
Madam President.
Yes, Ms. Abbott.
I wanted to ask the mayor if the information on lead paint testing will be available to people who can't attend that meeting? Like, will it be on our website, or will it be YouTube'd, or?
We absolutely will make it available for those who cannot attend in person. Ms. Abbott, let me verify what mode of communication channel that will be in, so you can share with your residents.
Okay, because for some people, this will be short notice that it's tomorrow, but I know that there are a lot of people who would be interested in knowing more about the program.
Yes ma'am, well, this is just a reiteration, but I got you.
Yeah, but with Christmas and New Years, you know, there's a lot of things that sail past some of us.
Yes ma'am.
Just a few of us. Thanks. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. McDaniels.
I think there are particularly senior who are working with the Mayor's Base Program. She reached out to us over the Friday. And the information is going to be shared on our website to assist, as well with an email.
Perfect.
Specifically, Latrice Slade reached out to us, yes.
Thank you very much. So we'll be sure to get that information out, and just to reiterate the fact that that opportunity is there for additional viewing and information about that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, those are your communications. Thank you very much. I do appreciate you for also sharing with us. I did get some questions about the Monday Pickup for the Uniform Trash Bin. So hopefully, all of that information will be reposted again for those residents that are... They have the email, because we did get questions about whether that pickup was yesterday or not, knowing that it wouldn't be. Alright, thank you. At this time, Mr. Clerk, are there any announcements of boards and HSCs' explorations? Thank you very much. At this time, councilors, we'll consider the consent agenda, so Mr. Clerk, will you give us those items?
Okay, consent agenda starts on page 2 with item 1. Then we skip over to page 9. Chief Mitchell, what item is that again? Requested withdrawn, I forgot. 30? Okay, on page 9, we have items 3, 4, 5, and 6 on consent. Page 10, we have items 7, 8, and 9 on consent. Page 11, we have items 10, sorry, 7, 8, and 9 on consent, on page 10. Page 11, we have items 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14 on consent. Page 12, we have items 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, and on consent. Page 13, we have items 20, 21, 22, 23, 24, and 25 on consent. Page 14, we have items 26, 27, and 28 on consent. Page 15, we have items 29 and 31 on consent. As just mentioned earlier, item 30 has been requested to be withdrawn. Page 16, we have items 32, 33, 34, and 35 on consent. Page 17, items 36, 37, 38, 39 are on consent. Page 18, we have items 40, 41, 42, and 43 on consent. Page 19, we have items 44, 45, 46, and 47 on consent. Page 20, we have items 48, 49, and 50 on consent. Page 21, we have items 51, 52, 53, 54, and 55 on consent. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilors, are there any items that you would like to have moved or added to consent? Counselor Abbott?
Yeah, I don't really want to remove item 29. I just want to know if we have a list of locations outstanding that we are going to be doing this, and then I guess if there's money left over, we would do other locations, but do we have a list?
The answer is...
Chief? Is it not in the...
It's somewhere.
Okay.
29, yes.
Yes, 700 Block of 19th Street South, 900 Block of 7th Street Endly, 1600 Block of 41st Street West, and 2200 through 2500 Morris Avenue. To clarify, this is not intended to replace a citywide on-call contract that has been managed by PEP Stonewater.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
So I don't want to take it off, I just wanted to know.
Alright, thank you, Ms. Abbott. Any other items, councilors? Counselor O'Quinn?
So the general question, there's items, I think, 48, 49. There's several vehicles on the agendas for us to purchase, and as I recall, last year, we approved a agreement in which we would lease vehicles, and so... Can you please refresh my memory and tell me, you know, how this all fits together? Because, you know, we're purchasing, obviously purchasing these vehicles, and we've, you know, purchased some since then. So I'm trying to understand the big picture here with regard to our rolling stock and turning that over and renewing it.
President?
Yes.
So to answer your question, Dr. O'Quinn, so the council helped us approve a leasing agreement that we had put in place almost two years, and it shook a lot of our fleet, from public works to fire to police. But within that amount that we set aside every year, we make a lease payment towards that lease agreement, and then we have another set of amount of money set aside for us to keep rolling stock coming in on an annual basis. So to your question, we have an allocation around 2.3 million, or maybe a little less than that, where we use, Secretary Roberts, our head of management management, comes in and makes sure that we evaluate all our departments and kind of prioritize where we are when it comes to fleet, when it comes to fire, police, and public works. So on an ongoing basis, we're always trying to replenish our fleet, especially when it comes to police.
Okay, so... It...I'm trying to understand, you know, with... What's the rationale for leasing some vehicles versus purchasing others?
Yeah, so the leasing program is for those equipments that have a useful life that's kind of over five to 10 years. So it makes more sense to lease something that long-term versus a police car that traditionally maybe lasted one to two years. Or we'd rather pay everything out front instead of trying to pay for it over a span of five years when we only going to use it. Rotate it out.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items that you have questions, or you would like to add or remove from consent?
Yes ma'am, President, I still would like to hear about the Choice Neighborhoods. I think this is a very, two very good initiatives we need to hear, so item 6. I still want to hear about 8, because I really think people need to know this is really a big deal, that we're getting the NCAA Division 1 Championship for Men's. Oh yeah, it's just the Men's on this one. And then 9, that's a Choice Grant, again. 27, just because I want people to know it's actually happening. And then 28, because that's a big deal with street paving. And thank you to Chief Mitchell, I'm gonna say that in advance, because I saw a street on there that was supposed to be bidded out, and now it's gonna be paved, so thank you.
Oh, you are.
Chief, not mayor.
Alright. Mr. Clerk, did you get those items, or councilors, did you all get those items that being asked to be pulled from consent?
6, 8, 9, 27, and 28. So that's page 14 for 27, 28, and then page 9 and 10 for items 6, 8, and 9.
Alright. Any other items, councilors? All items designated as consent are routine and non-controversial, and will be approved by one motion. No separate discussion of these items will be permitted unless a council member, the mayor, or citizen interested in a public hearing so requests. If so, such items will revert to its normal place on the agenda order of business. All matters of permanent operation, unless indicated with a P, will be read. All other matters will be announced by reading the item number only. All public hearings will be announced. Councilors, if I can entertain a motion and second for the approval of the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
How would I have you out? How would you like to vote for the consent? Alright, I'll put you back in. That vote should be up.
Alright, thank you, councilors. The items considered for consent have been approved. If you're here for any item that was listed as a consent agenda item, that item has been approved. We can ask you to have a great day, and we'll continue with the rest of our agenda. Mr. Clerk?
Okay. First item should be item number 6. Oh, I'm sorry, item number 2. Item 2. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute and deliver an agreement with the Birmingham Board of Education that amounts not to exceed $112,727 to provide the following goods and services for the benefit of students of the Birmingham City Schools. The board will assist with food and security solutions for students at Smith Middle School. The allocation is exclusively for the purpose stated. Said funds will come from District 1 discretionary funds. Motion please.
For the item 2nd.
Councilors, any questions regarding item number 2? Yes, Sarah?
Uh, got late, but I want to withdraw this item.
Second. There's a request to draw this one.
Well, you don't need a second, but the item is submitted by the city attorney, so... The withdrawal would come from the city attorney, but if everybody agrees to it, then there's no issue. But the city attorney owns the item, unless the council got the second, and it's on the floor and all that kind of stuff, it's a different story.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Thank you. Thank you, Clerk Frazier. City Attorney's Office will withdraw item number 2. Alright, thank you, so item number 2 is withdrawn. Next item.
Okay, let me note that right quick. Alright, next we'll go to 6, item 6. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a purchase and sale agreement with the Birmingham Board of Education of Birmingham, Alabama, and the city of Birmingham, in which the city will purchase two parcels of vacant real estate located 10th Avenue North, Birmingham, for a total price of $4,590,000 in support of the city's Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant Application.
And Mr. Clerk, can we also call number 9 with that one as well?
Number 9. Alright, number 9. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents required by the city to complete a grant with the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development, Choice Neighborhoods Implementation Grant Fund, FR 6600 N34, in cooperation with the Housing Authority of Birmingham District, and the Jefferson County Commission for the Economic Development, and the amount up to $50 million for the comprehensive revitalization and transformation of the Greater Smithfield Community Planning District located in Birmingham. It's successful, up to $7,500,000 of matching funds will be due from the city over the eight-year grant term, and authorize the mayor to take any and all actions and execute such documents as appropriate and necessary to accept and spend grant funds on behalf of the city in accordance with the grant documents.
Motion to approve items 6 and 9.
Second.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're excited to hear this information about items 6 and 9, so if we could... We did have this discussion during committee of the whole, it was also presented at Budget and Finance, but I agree with our councilors, we really want our residents to be aware of this program and what it can mean for our communities, thank you.
Yes ma'am. Again, good morning to the council. Before you, item 6 and 9 is a very transformational project related to housing in our city, west of 65, and the Smithfield community, that includes three neighborhoods, Smithfield, Graymont, and College Hills. The Choice Neighborhood Grant Application we plan to submit this month. We've applied for this grant before, and we know why we didn't get it, but we are, we feel good about our opportunity this time, not only our application, but our partnership, and what the detail of what's in this actual application that I'll now allow Dr. Benham Thomas to share with you all in detail, then open up for any questions you may have.
Good morning and Happy New Year. I know I've spoken to you all many times about the grant, we're very excited, and this is a really transformational opportunity, not only for these neighborhoods, but also for the city as a whole, because this is a federal grant that is highly competitive. We have put, we believe we're putting together an application that allows us to be highly competitive, which means, as the mayor mentioned, really stepping our game up, quite frankly, from our last application. And with that, being able to identify many, multiple properties within the Smithfield neighborhood that allow us to have transformational replacement housing. And so, one of those sites is the Parker High School surplus site, which is behind Parker High School, which has been vacant for many years and not really underutilized, but allows us the opportunity to not only transform that with housing, but also economic vitality, which would be on the first floor with mixed, with a mixed-use development. With this, we also have an option to be able to consider returning the property if at which time we do not get the grant, but we are very excited about the opportunity of receiving the grant, and that that might not be the discussion that we'll be having. But just to let you know, that that's the contract that we've discussed, and we're working with the school board not only to purchase this property, but as partners in our Choice Neighborhoods application, as a really important part of our educational component of the grant. And so, we're really working in lockstep with them, and felt like we wanted to be able to support what they thought was fair, as well as what we think the value of the property is. And so, that's what you'll see here. And in item number 9, just to move to that for a moment, this is the overall kind of leverage that we're committing to the overall program within the application. It lists there 7.5 million, however, that's the baseline. So that's the basic requirement of a city within a Choice Neighborhoods grant to leverage, to just even be able to submit a grant. What we're actually proposing is up to 35 million. And so, you'll see that change come forward, but that's what we're actually proposing, and that's what really allows us to be, I think, extremely competitive, but also allows us to put together something that provides the type of value and impact that we're looking for in order to be able to make transformation.
Thank you, Dr. T. Questions, Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Really excited, Dr. Thomas, about this opportunity for our community, because, you know, without something like this, we wouldn't be able to achieve the kind of catalytic development in, you know, a weak market, like, like we have around many of our public housing sites. I was just wondering, and I know this is very competitive, and I know a lot of work went into the previous one, and a lot of work went into this one. Do we know how many awards will be made nationally?
Yes, so in the past, it's been about six. So we think that it will probably be around that number this next year as well.
Okay. Has there been any effort or success in evaluating? Because I know sometimes they have pre-proposal conferences, and you kind of get to see who else is going forward. Is there any strong competition from the southeast or from the state?
So we don't know who is applying, but what we will learn is in the summer, if we're a finalist, they will come and do a site visit for which we will be preparing, and we will be letting all of you know about. But at that point, we might be able to hear about other competitive applicants who are finalists.
I think it's also important to note that there was some serious discussion with HUD from our past application about what was good, what didn't work, holes, gaps, et cetera. And I think we've been able to address all those things with how we leverage partnerships this time, as well as additional resources in the submission of this second application.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments, councilors? Counselor O'Quinn?
Um, yes. Also, extremely excited about this. I mean, the potential for transformation is just phenomenal. You know, I know most of the folks who may be hearing about this out there may not be able to conceptualize what this is, but trust me, it will be phenomenal. And, you know, when I think about the history of Smithfield, and, you know, all the racial terrorism that happened there, and, you know, the prominent persons in the black community who made that their home, you know, there's just so much history there, and it's such an area that so much deserves this type of effort. I did have one question. Will the purchase of the Parker High School surplus property, will that amount count towards our minimum requirement for the grant application?
Yes, so the purchase of the property counts towards leverage for our neighborhood component of our grant, and also towards our housing leverage, because it's part of what will be utilized in order to rebuild replacement housing. So it counts within that number.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, Councilor Moore?
Yes, I just, I just have one question. First of all, as my colleagues have stated, this is a very transformational project that, you know, we have the opportunity to engage in, and so I'm excited about it. Just wanted to know plainly, because I know a lot of people are hearing Choice Neighborhood, they're hearing all these terms. How many housing opportunities would be, you know, provided in this?
Yeah, so we are looking towards up to 1,000 new units in Smithfield of replacement housing. So that's mixed income housing, so that will support across different levels of income, but up to 1,000 units, which is really transformational, and there's no other development that will replace that amount of housing at one time.
That's big, that's big, okay. Thank you, I just had to break it down for me.
Counselor Tate?
Madam President, I'm just gonna echo my colleagues, excited for Counselor O'Quinn and Counselor Clark. Dr. Thomas, excited for you, Mr. Starworth, Mr. Datcher, and the mayor, you know, for making this investment. This is going to be huge, you know, for the community and for those who, you know, are looking for something different in their lives, and, you know, with your background in, you know, health, the health industry. And, you know, with your background in, you know, health, the health industry, this is, this is just really, really huge. So I am so grateful and standing and believing that Birmingham will be, uh, chosen for this, because you have not, because you asked not, so we decree and declare that, that we happen for this city.
We receive it.
Thank you very much.
No, no, no.
Councilor Porten?
Um, I'm really excited about this. I was really thinking, you know, we talk about crime and poverty, and a lot of people are finally, you know, realizing that there are other factors that contribute to crime and poverty, and affordable housing is one of those things, because a lot of times, especially we're about to have a recession coming, people can't afford the housing.
Yeah.
And so if they can't afford the housing, then they're put into a housing predicament, maybe it could have been temporary, but they can't get out of. But I know, like, Loveman's Village may be a good opportunity for people. Um, I was using that as an example. That's supposed to be temporary. Well, maybe they can go from there and go to Smithfield, and now they can have a mixed-use housing. Um, this will help with jobs, and I think this will deal with the issue people have been saying for the last years about Birmingham losing our population, but I think this is encouraging people to come back and families. Uh, Mr. Datcher, shout out to him, uh, refilling our schools, helping that out. I think if we give people great environments to have, and our kids can thrive in it. So I really want to thank you for all you done, and Cory too. I think you guys are doing a great job with making sure that we have options in Birmingham, right? Because we need to make sure that people have options when they want to live here. So, thank you.
And congratulations, Mr. Mayor, too.
Thank you. Councilor Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. This is a fantastic opportunity, and I'm excited about it, but I have one question that's for the people who already live over there. Who's gonna be in charge of maintaining the property until it's under, this project is underway, is the?
Are you referring to item six or item nine?
Well, the property, the two parcels of property that we're purchasing from the school board.
Oh, well, as of now, it's still theirs. Um, what's, what happens is, um, at the, at closing, um, the money will be placed in escrow, escrow. So I think between the school system and us, we'll work us, we'll work that out. But as of now until closing, they are responsible. Um, I imagine upon closing, uh, that we will be responsible.
And then that would mean Public Works would have to do it, or would we farm that out or contract that out to others?
I imagine Public Works, uh, but the lots currently are just flat, and so it's just grass.
We could get some goats. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilor Woods, I believe you had a question or comment?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam President. Did want to know if you could just talk about the timetable for the grant application process?
Yes, so the application is due January eleventh. We are planning to submit January ninth, at which point we will be waiting to hear if we're a finalist, um, at, and we'll find out around the summer of this year whether or not we're a finalist, at which point they would do a site visit. And then next fall, twenty twenty-three, is when we would find out if we're awarded the grant. And, um, that's when we would receive the funding, um, and be able to begin kind of the planning as well as begin our execution, because much of our application is the planning process. So that's kind of the high-level timeline for the grant.
And I think my main concern got answered via the contingency, but, uh, I guess that sounds pretty strict. I'm not familiar. I haven't seen one of those if being that, uh, in a contract. But is that as straightforward as it seems as far as, uh, if that doesn't go through?
Yes, sir, it is on purpose. Literally, like, so the school system, they're not gonna even receive the money upon closing. It's literally end up being escrow, um, contingent upon what happens with this grant.
Okay, so I'm assuming the closing company or who holds those funds? Would that be a bank?
The closing company.
Closing company?
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just want to close up by saying, um, I'm very excited about the opportunity. We talked about the transformational, how transformational this is for the city. Uh, my grandparents grew up on, uh, my grandparents lived on Tenth Avenue North. So as, um, children, we often walked through that area, and we knew what families were at that time and, um, the pride and the growth that was in that area. So when we think of how this can revitalize and bring that area back to life, not that it's living right now, but we can bring young families back into that area, I'm very excited about that. And just, um, we've heard so much about Birmingham and our loss in, um, during the census, and this is an opportunity, this is just some of the things we're doing to help to bring residents back to the city of Birmingham. So, and bring it, make it affordable. And so I really want to be sure this is affordable housing that we're bringing to, uh, this area. So thank you all very much. Again, kudos to you and your team, Dr. Thomas and, um, Mr. Stalworth, Mr. Datcher, and of course Mayor Whitton. We really appreciate this. So I believe councilors are ready to entertain the vote.
Councilor Walker, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you, councilors. Items number six and nine pass. And again, we thank everyone for this opportunity for the city. Next item.
I'll go back to item eight. Item eight, excuse me. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an event sponsorship agreement with Knight Eddie Sports Entertainment LLC, on which Knight Eddie will host the NCAA Division One Men's Basketball Championship Games in twenty twenty-three in Birmingham at the Birmingham Jefferson County Complex on March sixteenth and March the eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The city will provide incentives to Knight Eddie in an amount of thirty thousand dollars pursuant to amendment number seven seventy-two as a sponsorship for the NCAA Division One Men's Basketball Championship, which will generate revenue from out-of-town visitors and provide positive publicity for the city. Motion, please.
All right, councilors, this is a resolution authorizing us to execute an event sponsorship, um, in conjunction with the NCAA Division One Men's Basketball Tournament. So could we, um, any questions, councilors? I know this was presented during budget and finance, but. And economic development, yes. Any questions? All right, thank you. We'll go ahead and entertain the vote.
All right, the vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item number eight passes. We look forward to seeing basketball. Next item.
Item twenty-seven. A resolution, amending resolution number eighteen ninety-five dash twenty-two adopted by the council November the first, two thousand and twenty-two, accepting the lump sum proposal of Griffin, Giffen, I'm sorry, Recreation Incorporated, Pelham, Alabama, in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, six hundred and forty-five dollars, and authorize the mayor to execute a contract with Giffen Recreation Incorporated using American Rescue Plan Act funds allocated to demolish, provide, and install playground-related equipment services at Woodward Park, uh, located at twelve fifteen McMillan Avenue Southwest, in accordance with the terms of the quote number Q twenty-two dash twelve oh three and Q twenty-two dash twelve oh four. Through the Sourcewell, a national governmental purchasing cooperative authorized by the Alabama Department of Examiners of Public Accounts, is to correct that the vendor has been awarded Sourcewell Contract Number one oh five five, um, one oh five twenty-one dash LTC S four related to the purchase of equipment, supplies, and services in accordance with code of Alabama nineteen seventy-five, sixteen forty-one dash sixteen, that's fifty-one A fifteen.
All right, Councilor Smithman?
Um, I just want to be read out loud, so all anyone staying can know is being passed. Hopefully, hopefully, it's gonna be passed. So this is one of my ARPA projects, so I just want them to know this is happening.
Thank you very much. Any questions, councilors? Councilmore?
No, I just want to celebrate my colleague, uh, on this. Uh, I know that this is probably something that, you know, a lot of folks have been waiting for and something that is extremely important to them, and so I definitely want to, you know, uh, just support that. Um, I do want to, you know, ask the question to the administration. I know that, um, there are several parks, uh, within my district as well that need some assistance. And one of the things that we need help with is estimates, getting estimates on different things that need to be repaired. And so, uh, wanting to see how we can kind of expedite those processes to be able to, um, allocate some of our ARPA funds to that as well.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Clark, Mr. Chief.
So to answer Councilmore's question, um, the council was very generous to give us some funding to get that, that gap funding for consultants to be on the ground and help us do all the estimates. So ARPA projects is going to do a R and P process to try and hire those individuals to help us. Uh, the federal funds mandate that we have to have a process of R and P to get any type of consultants on the ground to help us with the ARPA project. So we're trying to finalize that now, so hopefully that'll close that gap. We're trying to get those estimates completed.
Got you. Do we have, I guess, a timeline on?
We'll, we'll shoot you something.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, so I'm pretty sure they're about to text me and tell me. So as soon as I get that information, I'll share with the council.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Councilor Porten?
Also, uh, Councilmore, I got these quotes a while ago, um, because originally I was trying to, well, I am working with my dad and Sheila Tyson with it, so I had the quotes for a while. But I just asked Park Board for quotes on different equipment they needed as well. So that's how I got my quotes.
Got you.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Councilor, is this one of our, this is one of our first ARPA projects that's coming before us, is this correct?
Something like that.
We'll give her that, yeah. But thank you very much. All right, we appreciate that. More to come. Councilor Woods, this has to stop a bit. All right.
Madam President?
Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Abbott?
I did want to say that this, um, Giffen Recreation, we've contacted them about the accessible, uh, equipment for Bessie Estelle Park, and they do have equipment for children who are handicapped and ones who are not, so that they can all play together instead of somebody sitting over on the side watching everybody else have fun. And, uh, they will send you information so you can see all of their offerings, which is a lot of fun. And then as soon as you determine whether you have any money or not, you can spend it. And also McMillan, McMillan is misspelled in this item and should be fixed. I realize they'd probably like to be McMillian, but, um, it sounds like a McDonald's takeoff.
We're lying, sorry, it's the street. Okay.
Yes.
McMillan. It's just got one extra I.
Yes.
Okay, McMillian. All right, thank you very much. All right, councilors, we're ready then to entertain the vote on this item.
Okay. All right, that vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty-seven passes. Congratulations. Look forward to this in, uh, the park. Thank you. Next item.
Should be item twenty-eight. Uh, resolution accepting the unit price bid of Dunn Construction Company Incorporated, thirty-nine oh five Minnesota Airport Highway, Birmingham, in the amount of twelve million, six hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars for resurfacing citywide, two thousand and twenty-three, located in Birmingham. This being the lowest responsible response to bid submitted, and authorize the mayor to enter through a contract with Dunn Construction Company Incorporated in substantial deform contained within the bid documents, in accordance with said bid, providing that a total compensation payable under contract now to see the appropriation. Motion, please.
Deliver approval?
All right, councilors, any questions regarding this item? Remember, Dr. O'Quinn, yes?
Um, just wanted to check, this is for paving that will occur in twenty twenty-three. Is that correct? All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, yes, Mrs. Abbott?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask, um, first of all, I'm very excited about this, and I wanted to know if our website will have the list of streets that are going to be paved with this money so that residents can go and find their street and get all excited about it?
Yes, I, I don't foresee that being an issue. Um, the, the list of streets are all within the document, so we'll make sure that we'll put that on the city website and share it with council administration, put it on your website.
Okay, one other question. The street markings, the stripe.
Yeah, so B dot and the subcontractors usually handle all that, but we'll get you a definite answer on that to make sure that we're not saying the wrong thing.
Yeah.
And, and it would be helpful too to know which streets, counselor, because that will help us to know which areas targeted. It is a combination of our department and our subcontractors. So if there are areas that you want specific information on, let us know, and we can tell you who's responsible.
And I'm, I'm assuming this is post-paving, right?
Yeah, post-paving, and the paving, you know, they ground, they grounded all the street markings, and then nobody ever came and put any back, and they also damaged curbs and gutters, and nobody ever came and fixed them. So, you know, that's, that's an issue, because you remember that last week, or whatever, the last time we met, I mentioned that intersection where everybody just ran the stop sign? And that one needs some crosswalks and some markings so that, I mean, I know they'll probably still run it, but it would be nice if they had markings, and they just never have, nobody's ever come back and put them back. And I thought, well, I know that traffic engineering does say that they can't put stripes down when it's cold or wet or, you know, lots of other environmental conditions, so maybe they just never found a good day. But I just want to know who's responsible.
They're listening now, and we'll follow up with them, and then follow back up with you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Councilor Woods?
Thank you, Madam President. I got a question about a road, I think, that was in the previous, uh, and it had associated with some state funding, I think, and a combination of funding, but it didn't get paved. And this is, um, Old Springle Road.
This is not in this item though, correct? You're just asking a question?
Yeah, it's a previous one.
Okay. We'll let them follow up with that one.
Because that one was one, I want to say it was supposed to get paved in twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, and so.
Uh, you get that information to the, um?
Came across in the list like this, and, uh, so we can get an update on that. Be greatly appreciated.
Thank you. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of questions about, uh, this item. Um, I see the project codes on here, but I was just curious about where the money is coming from for this contract?
These funds were approved by the council in the last operating budget. So it has different funding sources from just general fund funding. Um, I think we use a lot of state and local gas tax to do street resurfacing. This is a combination of different funding sources.
Okay, so this is just the contract associated with funding we already approved for resurfacing. So I'm just curious about, like, how we pick the streets, because I think before we were told it was an older resurfacing list and that there might be some sort of citywide assessment of street conditions so that we can prioritize based on current conditions. And it, it seems to me like we're, we're spending a lot of money on resurfacing, but, I mean, most of the streets that I drive on are just horrible. So, um, just wondering what our process is for prioritizing based on current conditions? And if we can use any kind of drone technology or some kind of technology solution to get a overall view? And so we can rank more objectively?
So, um, Madam President?
Yes.
So if you recall for the current conditions, the council approved five hundred thousand dollars in this current budget for us to find, uh, to have a consultant come help us actually use data points and not just complaint points to find more of street resurfacing projects as a higher priority than just those that's saying these streets are raggedy. Um, so, uh, I need to follow up with the team to make sure that that's moving, but I know that we have funding in place to go ahead and have that consulting work done so staff can prioritize what streets need to be paved based off of deterioration and just priority-wise.
Okay. Yeah, I, I think we gotta do that, um, just to, just to even get some estimates about what kind of resources we need to throw at it to catch up. Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Chief. All right, we're ready to entertain the vote.
All right. Vote should be up.
All right, thank you. Item number twenty-eight passes. Next item.
Item thirty has been requested withdrawn, uh, by the administration, and next will be item number fifty-six. On page twenty-one, a resolution setting a public hearing January the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to consider the adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number Z A C, two thousand and twenty-two dash fourteen, to change zoning district boundaries from B two General Business District to U M U H, qualified mixed-use Hyde District filed by C. Randall Minor, uh, Mayor Cooper Gill, applicant, resident, owner, Twenty-Second Street Partners LLC, for properties located at twenty-two thirty Highland Avenue South, twenty-one seventy-four Eleventh Court South End, eleven twenty-eight Twenty-Second Street South, situated in northwest, northwest quarter of Section Six Township Eighteen South, twenty-two West Birmingham.
All right, councilors, this is, um, our resolution to set this public hearing on January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. We'll call for the vote.
All right. Vote starts now.
All right, we've set that hearing for January thirty-first. Next item.
Item fifty-seven. A resolution setting a public hearing January the thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three to consider the adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham. to consider the adoption of ordinance to amend the zoning district map of the city of Birmingham, case number ZAC 2022-17, to change zone district boundaries from R3 Single Family Residential District to Q I1 Qualified Light Manufacturing District filed by Shannon S. Riley of MPBR, applicant representing the owner Gateway Property located at 5201 Mesler Airport Highway, situated in Northwest Quarter of Section 21 Township 17 South, Range 2 West Birmingham. Motion, please.
Remove approval.
All right.
All right, councilors, this is another resolution setting a public hearing for January 31st, 2023. We're ready for the vote.
All right. Vote should be up now. That vote should be up.
Thank you very much. That item passes. We've set that public hearing. Next item, Mr. Clark.
Item 58, just receiving, uh, the emergency purchase notice from the purchasing agent, relative to the emergency request for repair of H-Vac at five station number 27. That concludes the agenda item.
Thank you very much. Counselors, at this time, we do not have requests for any speakers. I do want to acknowledge our young ladies that we have out there. So nice to see them here and witness, uh, council meetings. So we'll just say, good morning, ladies. Glad to see you all. Thank you. All right, at this time, we will allow councilors, if you have any, uh, updates from your districts, and we'll start with you, Councilor Woods.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, quickly, a few announcements. Spring Lake Neighborhood Association will meet on Thursday, uh, January 5th at 6:30 PM. This meeting will be at Huffman High School. The Echo Highlands Neighborhood Association will meet also on Thursday, January 5th at 7:00 PM. Uh, they'll still be meeting via Zoom. And then the Roebuck Neighborhood Association meeting will be Monday, January 9th at 6:30 PM at, uh, the Birmingham East Police Precinct. Uh, I also want to, uh, I guess, thank everybody involved. The Edwards Lake Sidewalk Project has gotten commenced and is, is progressing well. Uh, that was just a very unique example of a project that initiated with a neighborhood, actually. They, they brought that project forward. One of their committees, uh, in the Huffman neighborhood, uh, brought that project forward and, uh, we worked with them to get funding. Um, our joint chiefs and the mayor helped out, build the pot to the top and where we get that project, uh, off and running and hopefully get completed soon. But, uh, that's a new one because it falls directly on the border between two neighborhoods. And so, uh, Spring Lake also contributed to the project. So excited to, uh, for the residents to kind of see a project that they initiated, uh, get all the way to completion. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Tate?
Thank you, Madam President. Wileham Neighborhood will meet this evening at 6:00 PM in person at the Wileham Library located at 4307th Avenue, Wileham. You can also join the meeting. Conference call by dialing 720-740-9863. The access code is 6589380. The Simpico Finley Neighborhood Meeting will be Wednesday, January 4th at 5:30 PM. Um, also on conference call, that dialing number is 952-206-4918. The access code is 223418. Sherman Heights Neighborhood will meet on Monday, January 9th. Also by conference call, the dialing information is 9522064918. Access code is 223418. North Birmingham Neighborhood will be meeting on Monday, January 9th at 6:30 PM. Also by conference call, the number is 4254366348. Access code is 1023266. Central Pret Neighborhood will be meeting on Monday, January 9th at 6:00 PM. Also by conference call as well, the number is 720-740-9732. The code is 348808. The next budget, I mean, I'm saying budget and finance, Councilor Smith, the next public safety meeting will be on January 10th at 1:00 PM. You can submit your agenda items to Brandon McCray no later than Thursday, January 5th by 1:00 PM. Also, the Hope Ministries, uh, located at 938th Street North, Birmingham 3522, is offering free classes beginning January 3rd, which is today. So they offer classes, um, with, uh, internship, workforce development, a variety of classes. You can call them at 205-2026305. Madam President, I do have another quick announcement that I would like to make as well here. Um, I do want to, um, uh, uplift my family, um, the late John R. Hatchett III. President Biden signed a bill, my uncle was, is from Birmingham, Alabama, grew up in Collegeville. So the president, um, signed a bill to name the Oxnard Post Office after his civil rights work in, um, Birmingham, which started with his father, my grandfather, the late John R. Hatchett. So they grew up in Collegeville. Um, so he just continued the, the, um, the legacy that my granddaddy poured into him. So we will, I would be going to California standing with his daughter, who is running the Ventura Chap, Chapter of the NAACP and his late wife. So I do want to, um, you know, let Birmingham know that a young man from Birmingham, Alabama, is, uh, the post office in Ventura, California, will be named the John R. Hatchett III Post Office in Ventura, California, Oxnard, California.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good. All right, thank you. Councilor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, we are getting rolling with neighborhood meetings this week. In fact, tonight, um, gotta get my skates back on. Fairview Neighborhood will meet today at 5:30 PM. And you can call my office at 205-254-2304 to get the dialing information. Uh, they meet, uh, via conference call. But the Thomas Neighborhood is also meeting this evening. And they meet in person at the Mount Hebron Baptist Church Thomas at 6:30 PM. Uh, remember to mask, uh, for these in-person intimate settings. Uh, cleanups are coming back. We're getting ready to kick off our belitter free campaign.
Starting.
Went out.
Went out. Starting in, um, February.
Okay. Came back. Magic. So, uh, stay tuned if you want to come help us clean up. We usually post on, uh, Hands, Hands on Birmingham and, um, you know, promote with the neighborhood we're working with. Please come out and join me and the Freshwater Land Trust at Starbucks at Crossplex every Thursday. We meet at about five minutes till eight. And at eight PM, eight AM, we start, uh, a little one and a half mile loop. And, uh, we're using this occasion really just to encourage fitness, but also to raise awareness about the proposed Valley Creek Trail extension that will come through Central Park. Uh, and there's some recent good news about, uh, the federal funding approval. Uh, although with inflation, I'm curious how far the money's going to go. But, um, they did get, uh, the federal request approved. Uh, so this is becoming more real. And so we're just kind of trying to build some excitement about the Valley Creek Trail through our, uh, weekly Thursday morning walks at the Crossplex. Also, on January 21st, from nine to two, the, uh, the library at the Birmingham Botanical Gardens is celebrating National Seed Swap Day, a week early, with the community seed swap. Discover tips and tricks for growing from seed and chat with other seed savers. For more information and to register, go to bbgardens.org/calender. Uh, calling all aspiring, current and aspiring business owners, your cost of goods has gone up, so have you adjusted your prices? Create Birmingham is hosting an interactive workshop called Pricing to Thrive that will look at the financial goals you have for yourself and your venture and set realistic break even points to ensure that you can thrive. You can sign up for the January 18th workshop at createbirmingham.org/events. Lastly, I'd like to wish everyone a happy and prosperous 2023. Uh, I'm personally declaring 2023 a year of peace. Uh, peace in our homes and in our streets and in our hearts and in our minds. And I'm asking everyone to take a stand for peace. Uh, be peace, encourage peace within your spheres of influence. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Clark. Councilor Moore?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Uh, Happy Jumpman Year to everybody. Um, so hopefully everybody's New Year's resolution is still intact. Um, I know, so far, so good. Okay, great. Um, I know that I wanted to, first off, just say happy belated birthday to two, two very special mothers, uh, that celebrated their birthday on December 30th of last year, uh, mine's and Councilwoman Valerie Abbott's, uh, mother. And so just wanted to say happy birth, happy belated birthday, Mama, uh, because she wanted to get that shout out, all right? Um, I wanted to also just say a job well done to, um, the city and the mayor uh, for managing the warming station downtown. Um, you know, we had that cold weather to come through and a lot of people, you know, needed that assistance. They needed that help. And so I had an opportunity to actually go down there, um, and try to coordinate, you know, some, some of the churches in my, my district to be able to, uh, get people to those stations. And so I just want to say thank you to you all for the, the help in, uh, making that happen. Um, and also, I don't know if this is something that, you know, you could share, but if there are churches that, you know, want to, uh, just be a part of the network so that they can, you know, uh, assist in those times, uh, what would they need to do? Or how would they need to get in touch with, with you all?
Yeah, really simple, Counselor. Ms. Elena Melton, who's the Director of Special Projects. She and Don Lupo coordinate for all of the churches or houses of faith that would like to be a part of the consortium of, um, organizations that provide those shelters. So they can just reach out to her, uh, elena.melton@birminghamal.gov, or they can call the mayor's office and we'll connect them with, with her and Don Lupo.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, to, to mothers, fathers, parents, guardians, whoever you may be, school starts January 9th. School starts January 9th. So I wanted to make sure that we, we gave that announcement to you. Uh, Birmingham City Schools will be having intercession from January 3rd, uh, starting today through the 6th. And we'll, uh, like I said, return to school in person, January 9th. Uh, they also will be providing, uh, child, the child nutrition program, um, where they'll be giving meals, uh, for student, for students of, of school age. Um, so meal distribution will be, uh, like I said, January 3rd through the 6th. Uh, breakfast starts at 7:30 through 8:00 AM. And lunch goes from 11:30 AM to 12:00 noon. And so if, uh, students need some, some assistance in that area, uh, make sure that you send them to their schools and they'll be able to, uh, participate in the child nutrition program. Um, and last, but not, well, almost last, uh, due to the threat of inclement weather, uh, after school care and all after school activities are canceled, um, today. And so this includes, you know, activities connected to our, our winter, uh, intercession. And so, uh, just make sure that, you know, everybody is paying attention to the weather reports and, uh, staying safe. Um, yeah, so this the last thing. I'm getting old. I feel it. Um, I know I don't look it, but I'm getting old. Rea, rea, reason I'm saying it is, um, because I absolutely cannot stand fireworks anymore. Like, at all. Um, and so I don't know if there is something that, you know, we could do or a place that we could provide for people to go that is not in a residential area? Because listen, like, please find a farm somewhere, you know, like, go, go out in the wood, like somewhere away from the houses. Um, yeah, we just had, you know, a lot of activity. And so going into this new year, I do want people to be more mindful, uh, of how we operate and how we function. Um, the concealed care law actually takes effect this year, um, which is a very sad situation. Um, and so to my colleague's point, you know, about praying for peace, uh, this year, this 2023, like, I definitely want to make sure that everybody is praying, um, that we are, uh, covered and protected and that we are, you know, um, just being, just being wise about the decisions that we're making. Um, I also want to give a big shout out to, uh, the Engle Nook Neighborhood Association President, Reverend Gwendolyn Webb, who is in the building this morning. And, uh, that concludes my announcements. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Abbott?
Thank you, Madam President. The, uh, members of the Planning and Zoning Committee will be very excited to hear that our next meeting is January the 11th at 3:30 PM. Uh, yeah, the, uh, tonight, the Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood is meeting at the Avondale Library. And next Monday, there is some question in my mind about whether the Glen Iris Neighborhood is meeting or not, because I know they moved their meeting from last week. And a friend told me that they just canceled it completely. And I've still got it on my calendar, so we're going to check. And anybody who's interested in attending that meeting should check also. Um, I want to wish everyone a happy new year. I hope that our new year is filled with love and family and friends and no more gunfire and street racing and all that stuff that we're so sick of. Um, I do want to wish our group mothers here happy birthdays. My mother turned 100 years old on last Friday, the 30th. So she's done something that none of the rest of us have done. And no one in her, there's no one in the family, in her family or the other side of the family, my dad's family, who's lived that long. So, um, she's, uh, she's a shining star and still living in her home and still walking around and talking and doing all the things that people like to do when they're alive. So I'm very excited about that. Um, I want to also, um, offer sympathy to my next door neighbor who lost her mother, uh, three days after Christmas. So, uh, that's, that was tough. I attended the funeral yesterday. And, you know, death around the holidays is just difficult. Doesn't matter who you are or what your religious beliefs are. It's just hard when everybody else is happy, you know, to not be. Um, and as always, I wanted to ask all the residents of District 3 to go to our website for updates of all of the things that we possibly can cram on that site that we receive information about, um, but can't always remember when we go to neighborhood meetings. Um, and one other thing, the, my colleague had problems with fireworks. My neighborhood was alive with automatic gunfire this year. I've never heard so much gunfire in all my life. There would be no way that the police could go and catch all those people. And we don't have shot spotters anyway. But it was terrifying. You know, we usually walk at night. And we didn't want to go out and walk because we were afraid we'd be hit by some of that metal that was going up in the air. I doubt these people are shooting into the ground. So, you know, I just want to remind people, I mean, I realize the people who go around doing that do not watch the city council meetings, but maybe a relative does. You know, shooting your gun up in the air, all those bullets have to come down. And if they come down on someone's head, they could kill them. And it's, you know, there would be very little joy in New Year if someone died from your stupidity. And also ammunition costs a lot of money. So, you know, think, just think. But happy new year.
Happy new year. Thank you, Mrs. Abbott. Dr. O'Quinn?
Thank you, Madam President. Um, the East Lake Neighborhood Association that was previously scheduled for tonight has been postponed to Tuesday, January 10th at 6:00 PM, um, due to the inclement weather that's coming this evening. So again, East Lake Neighborhood Association meeting will be next Tuesday at 6:00 PM. And, uh, Forest Park South Avondale Neighborhood Association is scheduled for tonight at 6:00 PM at the Avondale Library. And that concludes my announcements.
Thank you very much. Councilor Proten?
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, the next budget and finance meeting is this Monday, January 9th. Submissions are due tomorrow by noon. There will be no PIC meeting today. Uh, Neighborhood Means, there will be no Mason City Neighborhood meeting this month. But Oakwood Place will meet today at 4:30 at Harrison Park. North Tittysville will meet tomorrow at 5:00 at Memorial Park Rec Center. And West End Manor will meet this Monday at 5:00 PM at New Hope Church. Um, the Tittysville Library is having a couple of events this week. Uh, their Senior Resource Day is January 4th, is every first Wednesday of the month, is from 10 to 1. Um, they're having their Community Resource Day, January 6th, from 10 to 2. So call the library if you want to register. And they're also giving away free diapers. I know diapers are very expensive for mothers and fathers. And so if you want diapers or to be involved in any of these resource days, please call Reba Williams at 205-322-1140. I will have to say about what Councilor Abbott and Councilor Moore were talking about. So I was with my family for New Year's, and at first I heard, you know, boop, boop, boop. I said, okay, fireworks. And then I heard a round of gunshots going off. I thought I was in the war zone. Like, I really, I mean, it was very, very close to our house, to the point I was like, do we need we to go down or something like? And, you know, I think people, and also it happened the next night as well and the next night as well, because my sister told me she couldn't go to sleep. And y'all, they started at 6:00 PM on New Year's Eve, as soon as it got dark. And, you know, I really think it's very inconsiderate, because why are you shooting off gunfire? Why are you doing fireworks? There are different ways you can celebrate the New Year. And I really am going to have to go off what Councilor Moore says. I really hope we have peace this year. I really, really do. And I hope some of the people who may have some type of influence on the community that are a little bit older, that you guys will help us and step up and really talk to these young men and these young women. I say young women, because sometimes they're the ones that get the guns for the young man. So I just really want people to know, residents to know, that we experience the same things you guys experience. Don't think it falls on deaf ears, so. But happy New Year, and thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much. I just want to start, I have to echo about the celebratory gunfire that started in my neighborhood as well. I think it's, you know, it's all over. It started, like you said, before it was even dark. And I want to talk to the neighbor that fired something. You talk about automatic gunfire. This thing sounded like a cannon, a cannon. So I thought, who sold this? Where did they get this from? And I know we all want to celebrate the New Year, but I'm just, you know, you're taking to effect the people that are around you that have to listen to this, and it is very frightening. It's very frightening. It's fearful. And so I would just like to ask if maybe next year we could get some sparklers or we do something? Because unlike you, Councilor Moore, I'm old. And so it does, I mean, it is something else. And I could just imagine being at home and you're, you know, by yourself and you're listening to this and you have to sit through this all night. It doesn't make you feel very celebratory about the New Year. And so I just hope that we can, as we do go into this new year, we think a little differently about how we want to celebrate and how we want to just gather and have fun with things. I do, councilors, I would like to offer two resolutions, if you would allow me. Pastor Jeanette Lewis Parker, she was a longtime member of District 7. She passed recently on December 27th. She was a member of the industrial neighborhood, very active there for a long time. She did have her son, Andre Parker, works for the city of Birmingham. She also had another daughter that was a retiree of the city of Birmingham. And if you've ever enjoyed some of the artwork that goes up during the holidays, Mr. Java Lewis, that he paints along the streets, this is his sibling. So I would like to offer a resolution of sympathy in honor of Pastor Jeanette Lewis Parker.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, for UC. Now the resolution. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you very much. The next item that I would like to ask for a resolution, and this is a congratulatory one, the Honorable Agnes Chappelle will retire after 45 years of dedicated service within the 10th Judicial Circuit Court. And Judge Chappelle was the first black female to practice law in Jefferson County. She began her illustrious career in 1977. She currently serves as the Circuit Court Judge Domestic Relations Division. She also presides over divorce cases. She presided over misdemeanor and domestic violence court, where she established the domestic violence court, which was the first therapeutic court for the city of Birmingham, where she served as municipal court judge. She's very active in the community. We wish her well upon her retirement, and I'd just really like to provide this resolution as accolades for her service, if you all would allow me.
Second.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Now motion.
Second. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Thank you all very much. These are the announcements today for District 7. We have several brush pickups that are scheduled within the district today and Wednesday, Thursday. And so if you'll please go to the D7 page or the city website to be aware of when those pickups occur. We'll have our first neighborhood meeting with the Jones Valley Neighborhood Association. They'll be meeting at the Poudley Library at 4:00 PM on Friday, January 6th. The Oxmoor Valley Neighborhood Association will meet Monday, January 9th, at the Oxmoor Valley Community Center. Also, just as a reminder, the Birmingham Public Library does present free tutoring, literacy, and homework help, and that'll be between January 17th through May 4th, and that starts at 3:30 to 5:30 PM, and that's down at the Park Place location. So if you need any help with free tutoring, please be sure to take your kids by the Birmingham Public Library downtown. The next Utilities Technology Committee meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January 17th at 2:00 PM in the council chambers. And the next committee of the whole councilors is scheduled for Wednesday, January 18th in the council chambers at 3:30. And that concludes my announcements for District 7. We do want to thank our officers on duty today, Cedric Pinkert, Michael, and I don't want to mess up the name, Graeger, and Michael Turner. So we thank you all for your service, and we do appreciate you. Councilors, could we entertain a motion? Oh, I'm so sorry. Councilor Tate? I apologize.
Madam President, thank you. I just got this quick announcement. The Peacemaker Boot Camp will be in Birmingham, Alabama, January 23rd to 24th, both sessions starting at 9:00 AM to 5:30 PM. And the second session on the 24th is from 9:00 AM to 2:30 PM. I don't have the location, but you can go to the Live Free, L-I-V-E, Free Peacemaker Boot Camp, Alabama, for your updates. I would encourage every person to attend this boot camp, neighborhood people, councilor members, because as we all know, gun violence is a public health epidemic. And in order to move in a direction to start understanding the framework, you must understand the public health framework. And so I would truly encourage people to attend this training, because as Councilor Smithler said, it is going to take everybody. It is going to take all of us to get in these streets, get in these neighborhoods, walk these streets. And this is just, you know, the beginning, along with other things. But I'm telling people, you're not going to be able to say, I made a mistake, I didn't want to, I didn't try to do what I did. When it comes to driving these cars, mistakes aren't going to be unacceptable. It's going to be some tall consequences that a lot of people are going to be paying. And so now we don't know who's carrying guns, which a lot of people don't know. That bill was sponsored by a former police officer. And so we are in the height, height of, you know, just things to explode. So again, I'm echoing what my colleague said, I'm believing, you know, that peace will come over this city, and people make wise decisions. Because I'm telling y'all, y'all do not, y'all ain't ready for the Alabama Department of Corrections, so let me just put that out there. I've walked that walk that is not a good journey, and most of you, you know, you're just not ready. Y'all ain't ready for that life. So you better get your life right, because making mistakes and saying, oh, they didn't mean it, and these comments on social media echoing this foolishness, it's not going to be acceptable. So people better get their life right. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Councilor Tate. Councilor Abbott?
Well, I just wanted to say before we go that I wanted to thank Kim Garner. She made a video about my mom, and I really appreciated her doing that, and of course, Dr. Lee, for coming up with the idea. My mother has been very entertained by the jib-jab. The, let's see, Stephanie sent Michael Bolton singing her "Happy Birthday." Now, she didn't know who Michael Bolton was. It would have had to been like Big Band for her to really, you know, get with it. But all of this stuff, you know, when you're, when you get to be that age, there are limited opportunities for entertainment, and the jib-jab really got the attention.
We were glad to oblige, and thank Kim for coming up with that idea. Thank you very much. All right, councilors, we'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
All right, thank you. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Well, I feel quite sure that there's never been a councilman who's still had their parents that's my age. And it's unusual, but my mother is a fantastic lady, and she's still getting around, she's still doing everything, she's not in a home. And I just feel like that for that, it's pretty amazing. 100 years on December 30th. My mother, of course, was born on the 30th of December of 1922. She was born in Elmhurst, Illinois, and she had five, she had one brother and four sisters. She's a person who is widely known for her beautiful smile, which she shares with everyone. And her brothers and sisters used to say that she was the pet, that everyone loved her the best, that she was the pet. And I think it was because she's such a kind, loving, caring person who just never has anything bad to say about anyone and is always trying to help. And she graduated from the University of Chicago because her father insisted that every one of his children get a college degree, which back then was quite unusual. So she met my father because she worked with his two sisters at Presbyterian Hospital in Chicago. And after the war, she actually met him during the war on leave, and then after the war, they got married and moved to Birmingham, Alabama. And there was even an article in the paper welcoming her to Birmingham, which I guess they did that back then. And then, of course, she had three children, I'm the middle one, I have two brothers. And she has just, she worked for the Health Department for a long time, retired from the Health Department, and then she's just been living large since then. So I suppose that the biggest thing that she taught me was, you know, basically how to behave, but also because we, she was a member of South Side Baptist Church from the time she moved to Birmingham, married to my dad, which has been, she's been here 74 years in Birmingham, so a lot longer than in Elmhurst, Illinois. But I think basically how to treat other people and how to get along in life, but to get along as a good person rather than the one who's written in the headlines for something bad. So I think that was, I think that's the biggest thing, is just, you know, how to comport yourself and then how to treat other people.
Happy birthday to you.
Well, I want to say that I love her very much and that I'm thankful that I still have my mother, because most people my age don't.
It's amazing. This is a great way to go out. I put my heart into this program and I put my heart in this last game, so to get that, it's amazing.
Well, we're here at the Ticket Smarter Birmingham Bowl. I'm so excited to be here at Texas Stadium, have our two teams in here, that's a great crowd. We're always enjoy having fans along, come to our city and enjoy the hospitality of Birmingham.
It's just the perfect way to end the season and it sends you into the offseason with so much positive momentum.
And so it's just a great place to be, some good football, good food, good fellowship. Hope everyone is having a great time.